County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, June the fourteenth at one thirty P. M. Officially called the meeting to order. Today's invocation, Ottawa County seeks to be a welcoming place where you belong. Recognizing that we are a county of many different faiths and traditions, our invocation today is offered from one of the perspectives. I will now ask Commissioners Zialstra to introduce today's invocation guest.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. I'd like to introduce Reverend Jane Jen Adams. Jen Adams is my pastor. She's been serving as a priest at Grace Episcopal Church Holland for twenty-eight years. And she became rector, which is our head pastor sixteen years ago. I am proud of her work at Grace, which has involved helping Community Action House launch their food club ministry, contributing to community housing partnership, lighthouse immigration advocates, and providing housing for refugees in collaboration with Bethany Christian Services and Saint Francis Catholic Church. Reverend Jen is also a founder of Holland is Ready and a founding board member of Out on the Lake Shore and is a member of Faith Justice for Leaders.
Will you all rise, please?
Thank you for the invitation to be with you today. Thank you also, whoops, thank you also for this mug, which you presented to me saying it might be too big for coffee, but I don't think it is. I think it's it's just right. So, thank you for the gifts and again for the invitation. I'm mindful of the breadth of faith backgrounds, as as mentioned, as you began, breadth of faith backgrounds and perspectives in our county. And so I invite you either to join me in prayer or to create a silent inner space in which you can settle as this meeting begins. Loving God, we give you thanks for the gift of this day, for the rain which waters the earth, the sunshine, warmth, and beauty of this season, and for the many kinds of people created in your image. We give thanks for these elected officials giving themselves in service to us all, for the time and heart and thought they give to face the many challenges of this day, together seeking a common good. Grant them wisdom, courage, and compassion in their hearings, deliberations, and in the decisions they make on our behalf. We give thanks for all teachers and school administrators as they finish the school year. We give thanks for their tireless efforts through this pandemic, their love and care for our children and youth through days that have been long and hard. Give them rest, help them play, and grant them wisdom, courage, and compassion as they prepare and plan for a new year. We give thanks this month for the annual gatherings of Pride, Juneteenth, and other celebrations that remind us of the story's struggles and gifts which our neighbors bring to the greater community we are. Grant us all the ability to listen, to learn, to grow in ways that are mindful of your call to love one another. Loving God bless all those who call Ottawa County home. As we embrace the freedoms given us, oh God, help us to also recognize the holy ties that bind us to each other. Help us hear your call to forge ways of love and care in this world. As we grieve our failings and wrestle with our divisions, help us make this world a better, safer place for all your children. Grant healing where healing is needed, strength where strength is needed, and hope where hope is needed. We ask this in the name of a God who embraces us all. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Baumann.
Here.
Mr. Zialstra.
Here.
Mr. Danenberg.
Here.
Mr. Meppelink.
Here.
Mr. Turpstra. Mr. Holtblor.
Present.
Mr. DeYoung.
Here.
Mr. Keiers.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
Mr. Fenske.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Presentation of petitions and communications.
None from us.
Thank you. Board Chair comments, I have three. Our clerk's office will be doing public accuracy tests for the August second and used in tabulating the vote count, does so in a manner prescribed by the Michigan State law. All voting precincts and townships and cities are scheduled between June twenty-first through July first for this testing. Last Thursday, the groundbreaking ceremony was held for the new Family Justice Center here in West Olive. This fifty-six thousand square foot facility will bring all the departments of the Twentieth Circuit Court Family Division under one roof. This includes juvenile court, friend of the court, and other related offices to provide coordinated services to all residents. Anticipated completion date is spring of two thousand twenty-four. Ottawa County is reducing hunger in our community through various agencies. Children eighteen and under have access to food through Eat Up and Meet Up locations. A free meal is given with no registration needed. In addition, mobile food pantries will be located throughout the county in several locations. To find out more information, dial two one one to follow the locations for free food distribution. Finally, this is our first opportunity for public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And I think maybe perhaps you've already maybe given your address. But if not, if you can provide that to Rachel or Madison, that would be helpful, so.
So we have Terry White from Robinson Township.
Good afternoon, Terry.
Good afternoon, I'm Terry White, Robinson Township. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Danenberg and Commissioner Holtblor for stopping after our meeting last month or last week and talking to us. Again, I'm going to address the structure of the D E I office, centering in on the national partners and sponsors. Michael Bloomberg, The New American Economy, is in a partnership fund with the Democracy Fund Voice, which is a five oh one C four. This fund is owned by Pierre Omadar, owner of eBay. Pierre Omadar also owns Omadar Group. This is where multiple funds are located that are dealing with reimagining capitalism. That should be a surprise to small business community, realize the system they have risked their own money and time is being reimagined. I have asked who oversees the financials of this D E I office and was told the board commissioners does or the administrator. I would think it would be a hard for the administrator to do it seeing that the D E I office is in the same office space as he is. So I would guess it would be the Board of Commissioners. The reason I ask is because private third-party nonprofit influence sponsorships partners are coming into the D E I office. And the second page of the D E I website indicates nonprofits which five oh one C threes are encouraged to apply for something from this office. Please be transparent on this arrangement, on who and or what is benefiting from this structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Jill Versteg, City of Holland.
Welcome, Jill.
Thank you. Well done on the name. It's great. Friends, good afternoon. My name is Jill Versteg. I serve as the president and CEO of Evergreen Commons in Holland. It is a privilege to be with you today. I come to you as stewards of the American Rescue Plan Act, as those to whom much has been entrusted. As our county commissioners, you have people entrusted to your care. Women and men, girls and boys, grandfathers and grandmothers, neighbors and friends, all for whom COVID nineteen has had a significant negative impact. These are the people with longing and loss. These are the ones whose lives you are called to tend to. As trusted stewards of these funds, you have committed, as stated on your website, quote, "to thoughtfully distribute to areas of need which will generate sustainable and quantifiable positive outcomes." Friends, this is about transforming the communities of those entrusted to your care. This is about a generative blessing of resources to our community's greatest asset, people. Galvanizing our communities with resources and programs to strengthen and deepen our impact, intergenerational opportunities to combat social isolation, loneliness, loss, depression, and fatigue. Caregivers have life-giving respite. The young man who traverses through depression into newness. The grandmother who no longer worries about food scarcity. The group of teenagers who offer their talent and time for the benefit of single parents. Sacred spaces for people to enjoy meaning, purpose, and belonging. Maximizing the potential of older adults. Transforming Ottawa County into centers of successful aging. People thriving, organizations partnering together in new ways with sustainability. Our community transformed transformed for good. So friends, as we emerge from this ice age, you stand in a moment upon which much swivels. How will you tend to the people entrusted to your care? And how will your sons and daughters acknowledge that this was the moment that our leaders stepped into uncharted terrain with a grander vision of what could be? Yes, that was the day. Let that day be today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your your warm thoughts and your comments. Just for the audience and folks online, we're working on it. We haven't spent a penny yet. It's getting a little bit of interest. But we want to make sure that whatever we select, and there's different buckets that in ten to fifteen years, people will be able to look and say, wow, it's still working.
Yes.
So sustainability.
Susan O'Connor, a fifty-eighth District Court employee.
Welcome, Susan.
Thank you for allowing me to come here today. I'm very nervous. I'm not a public speaker, so I'll do the best I can. I'm not sure how many of you are aware that the Michigan Supreme Court declared June nineteenth as Juneteenth Day. It is a day that the courts are required to shut down for a holiday. I did some research with some other counties and all counties that are required to close their courts are paying their employees. Ottawa County is not paying us to be off. We are being required to use either P T O, unpaid leave, or try to make up the hours that you're scheduled to work on that Monday. I've had a lot of concerns brought to me as a union representative. They've come to me with their concerns on how they have to pay extra for daycare if they work extra hours. How their transportation scheduling or their spouse or significant other's schedule doesn't allow them to be able to come in early to be able to make up those hours. So our question is, why is Ottawa County not paying the employees when we are not being allowed to come into work? We have to stay home. It's not an option. So that's our question is, why are other counties in the state paying their employees and Ottawa County is not?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have for public comment right now.
Okay, thank you very much. We entertain a motion for the approval of our agenda today.
So move, Board.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if we could have a amendment to the agenda to add that to the discussion. I believe it's section E, after the annual report.
I think we can I think we should ask John to get back to us with a response to that question.
I can update that during my county administrator comments if that would work for the board.
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. I certainly don't have the answer to that, so that would be helpful.
Yep, I can respond to that then.
We have a motion on the floor for approval and a second. Is there any further discussion? Will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Keiers.
Yes.
Mr. Holtblor.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Zialstra.
Yeah.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under consent resolution, action in reports, Mr. Danenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent resolutions one through five. Support.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Zialstra.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Holtblor.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Keiers.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. I think this is the second time we've had a public hearing on this particular item. Commissioner Meppelink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed two thousand twenty-two millage rates for county operations of three point nine mils. E nine one one of point four one nine five mils. Parks of point three one six three mils. Community mental health of point two eight five nine, and the road commission of point four seven six seven mils.
Second.
Can we do a voice vote on this?
Yes.
All those in favor of opening up the public hearing indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. It's a public hearing, so anyone that in the audience or online that would like to speak to the proposed two thousand twenty-two millage rates for county operations, nine one one parks, mental health, and the road commission, please do so now. Is there anybody online that wants to speak to it? No?
Not handing hands. Nope.
Since we've done this at our last board meeting, do you want to just do a real quickie summary, just for those that may have not been here?
Sure, so every year you have to authorize the millage rates. With respect to these millage rates, the overall millage rate will be going down from five point four one five six mils to five point three nine eight four mils. So it'll be a reduction in the millage rate from what's been currently levied. And again, we're proposing an overall millage rate of five point three nine eight four, which is less than the maximum allowable that we could be levying. But the board has chosen to levy less than what you actually could levy. Our current maximum allowable levy is five point seven eight four six, so roughly four tenths of a mil below what we could levy. And so obviously, this will fund our general operations and E nine one one parks, C M H and and road commission. But it does represent a reduction in the millage rate for two thousand twenty-two compared to last year's millage rate.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions, discussion?
It's a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a rough idea, Karen, what that's going to produce for us, the new millage rate? We had a soft number maybe in finance?
I don't, I don't remember the exact number, but it was the the two thousand twenty-two budget was based on the three point nine mils for county operating, and this is in line with what we had budgeted. Fifty million. Give, I mean, the general fund operates on property taxes.
Thank you, Karen. Commissioner Meppelink?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing on the proposed two thousand twenty-two millage rates for county operations of three point nine mils. The E nine one one of point four one nine five mils. Parks of point three one six three mils, community mental health of point two eight five nine, and the road commission of point four seven six seven mils.
Second.
There's been a motion to close the public hearing and support. There's no further discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Action items from administration, Commissioner Meppelink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize the board chair and the clerk register to sign the resolution and related documents approving the two thousand twenty-two millage rate for county operations of three point nine mils. E nine one one of point four one nine five mils. Parks of point three one six three mils. Community mental health, point two eight five nine, and the road commission of point four seven six seven mils.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You call the roll, please.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Holtblor.
Yes.
Mr. Zialstra.
Yes.
Mr. Keiers.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. From Health and Human Services, Commissioner Holtblor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that Senior Resources Annual Implementation and Multi-Year Plans to approve and authorize the board chairperson and clerk register to sign the resolution for Senior Resources Annual Implementation Plan for year two thousand twenty-three and multi-year plan for two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-five. Support.
Is there any discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Keiers.
Yes.
Mr. Holtblor.
Yes.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Zialstra.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. From Planning and Policy Committee, Commissioner DeYoung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the social media policy, I move to approve the revised social media policy for review and comment.
Second.
Discussion? Comments, questions? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Zialstra.
No.
Mr. Keiers.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Holtblor.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Regarding the information security policy, I move to approve the revised information security policy for review and comment.
Second.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, will you call the roll?
Mr. Zialstra.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Keiers.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Holtblor.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Appointments. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make the motion to place into nomination the name of Richard Mattson from the Community Action Agency Advisory Board to fill one consumer sector vacancy beginning immediately and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Support.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Holtblor.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Zialstra.
Yes.
Mr. Keiers.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Also, I would like to make the motion to place the name of Michelle Vaughn Dean from the Community Action Agency Advisory Board to fill one consumer sector vacancy beginning immediately and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I wonder if Jennifer could answer these questions. Do we have, do you have a full board now? Are you Do we have, do you have a full board now? Are you still working on some more yet?
Yes, in fact, I have 11 filled of nine seats, and the reason for that is because the state required me to fill the seats before the new bylaws were accepted. Otherwise, we were out of compliance. So now my board is more full, which is good.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Well, good. I think we can do a full voice vote on this, can't we, since there's only one candidate? All those in favor of approval of Michelle Von Dean for the community sector vacancy indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Discussion items. West Michigan Enforcement Team Annual Report, Mr. Foster. Good afternoon.
Did you take any samples?
I did not. Not today, no.
He does have some bracelets for you.
We can, yeah, we can make arrangements next year if you like, but I did forward out that annual report if everyone received it. Again, my name's Andy Foster, Lieutenant with the State Police, but also the Task Force Commander for our We Met Ottawa team as well as our We Met Muskegon team. So I think, I don't know if there's any new faces this year, but we have two West Michigan enforcement teams that work together, one based on a Muskegon, one based here out of Ottawa. And in that packet, I, I kind of gave you a snapshot of this past year's events. A couple of things I'll point out for you just with that annual report. Our Board of Directors has changed this year. We've had some retirements. We've had some people move on to different positions, but in 2021, these were our current Board of Directors, so. Moving on to the seizure of narcotics this year was actually for both teams quite high. The number one drug we face and deal with is crystal methamphetamine, where in 2021, we seized approximately 7,168 grams of crystal methamphetamine, which is actually up quite a bit from 2020, where it was just over 2,000 grams of crystal methamphetamine. Granted, we were dealing a lot with the COVID crisis and things had, in a sense, slowed down. The other drug that we deal with quite often is cocaine, where we seized this past year, or in 2021, I should say, 3,219 grams of cocaine. And our seizure in fentanyl was also up this year with the majority of it being seized up in the Muskegon County area for both our We Met Ottawa and Muskegon teams. I, I was gonna move on to highlight some cases for you unless anyone had some questions on the the packet or any of the information I provided in that for you.
Just a quick question. Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair. Just if you go the marijuana number, is that's still pretty high, right?
So we don't typically deal with marijuana.
It doesn't come along with the, the package, so to speak.
Correct. So if, for instance, if we, some of our cases have led this 40 pounds of marijuana was actually, the detectives were working for Norton Shores Police Department. They were looking for a CSC suspect, sexual assault suspect. He had a warrant. We met helped surveil this suspect through the county into Allegan County where he finally was traffic stopped. And so not only did he have the felony CSC warrant, but he also had 40 pounds of illegal marijuana with him, meaning he had no medical marijuana card. He was way over his limit and was not obviously dispensary. So we don't typically deal in terms of marijuana. There are team, we do have a team out there that specifically investigates illegal marijuana, so there's still a black market out there of marijuana where the subjects kind of avoid their taxes and licensing regulations, so unfortunately that goes up.
Okay, so this just came, this came from one stop alone?
Yeah, that's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bergman?
Um, any, I, I brought this up before. I always, I look at the numbers. I see Ottawa County has 10, 10 officers involved, and Muskegon County has six, and yet the the much larger intake of, or hits in Muskegon County, how does that justify it? How, it seems like that's always the case, that we in Ottawa County tend to have more enforcement people involved than Muskegon County, and yet they have more the actions there.
Yeah, and, and that's the area as well, too, is, I guess, a lot of the narcotics, it's almost a hub for, destination hub, and a lot of that spreads out to the outline areas. You know, a lot of the personnel issues are just shorthanded in departments, too. The Muskegon team is up to, I think, eight detectives now, but just personnel with different departments and when they can help or not. And I think across the board, I oversee six different task force teams throughout kind of mid and west Michigan, all the way up to Mount Pleasant, to Luddington, and just across the board, personnel is down because department-wide, it's, it's pretty short. All right.
Is that it, guys, for questions? Okay.
I just wanted to highlight, it's hard to put a whole year's worth of cases for you, but I just wanted to highlight a couple that just show the great work. It sounds simple, but one just as basic is back in January, detectives here were summoned to a hotel in Holland City. One of our staff kind of noticed some drug paraphernalia, and the detectives began the investigation, were able to obtain a search warrant. 20 grams of crystal methamphetamine were seized right there in the hotel, just based on some cooperative work with some of the hotel staff and our detectives out there kind of being proactive with that information. Another case, too, we met detectives were trying to locate a subject that was wanted on a We Met warrant. And the lovely thing about social media, some people just like to put it right out there where they're at and when they're coming home. And well, we happened to find this subject on Facebook. He was making a return trip back to Holland, so we kind of set up, waited for him to arrive on train. He did resist. Officers tried to run away, threw a bag down. He was taken into custody, but he tried to discard almost 50 grams of crystal meth right there at the scene at the train stop in Holland. A couple of other bigger cases I wanted to point out. In February of this past year, both We Met teams worked kind of cooperatively together on a case that started in 2019. It was a high-level drug trafficking organization trafficking crystal meth in the area. So throughout the course of a year, you know, several undercover buys, search warrants, surveillance was done, and it kind of came to a culmination in February where both our We Met teams, federal law enforcement partners, did a one-day operation where they arrested nine individuals on federal arrest warrants. So this was actually prosecuted at the federal level. And in addition to just the year-long case, in that one day alone, 340 grams of crystal meth was seized, 113 grams of fentanyl was seized, 95 grams of heroin, as well as guns and, and cash proceeds from the drugs. So that doesn't count the whole past year of investigation that they worked on with that. So that was really a good case. They actually received a unit citation for that case by the work they, they had done on that. And one last one I just wanted to point out, or I should say two, we met detectives assisted back in, I have the date here, with the robbery at the bullet hole in March, where guns were stolen out of the bullet hole gun store in Holland. And our We Met detectives worked with the ATF and actually located suspects, did surveillance, found two of them in the Grand Rapids area as they were pulling into the Helen de Boss Children's Hospital, and were able to take two into custody. One actually tried to flee, and he was found with a, with one of the stolen handguns in his waistband and another one in the car. So it was a real good case. It led to a search warrant of a residence where more stolen handguns were recovered from the bullet hole. Robbery, if you will. So a really good case. And then one, I just wanted to point out, a detective with the We Met Ottawa team was assisting the DEA with live translation. She was translating Spanish for them on a particular case. It was actually a Mexico-based cartel trafficking drugs into the US and up to Michigan, and she actually helped coordinate the effort of 105 pounds of crystal meth that was destined for West Michigan to be stopped and seized. So she did a great job. She had a few other cases where she was able to help assist with four kilograms of fentanyl being seized as well as, back in April of '01, nine pounds of crystal meth, five semi-automatic pistols as well as rifles, and then also in April, another 15 pounds of crystal meth, just based on her work as a translator and also kind of an undercover officer, too, in those cases. So a lot of big drugs destined for our area that have been stopped, if you will, by the, the great work of the detective, so. Again, I could keep going, but might need more water to, to help drink, but no, if there's any other questions, I can try to answer them for you.
Thank you so much, Commander Foster, for keeping us safe and, and doing what you do and investigating all this stuff. It's definitely worth the effort from our, our different coordinations of our different departments, so that's
Definitely.
That's outstanding. That's a lot of activity that you just reported out.
For sure, and I think the goal, and our goal, too, is always the, we target the mid to high-level drug traffickers, so. And, and in this past year, there was a lot of, a lot of that great success, too, for the team, so, thank you.
How many different teams are there in the, in the state? This is the West Michigan teams.
Correct. The West Michigan, so there's lots across the state, but there's 26, 27 state-led multi-jurisdictional task force teams throughout the state. And other departments have their own units, you know, like Grand Rapids has a vice unit, or Kalamazoo City has their own vice unit. But this is truly a nice cooperative effort by multiple agencies, and I think that probably works best to tackle, I guess, a problem like this.
Any, any further questions? It's always interesting, your report.
And I didn't even talk about the, the stolen property that the detectives helped. Ottawa County had taken a, it was a automobile device. I'm not sure what it was used to help fix automobiles, but it was an $8,000 piece of equipment. Detectives took that case, and then the We Met detectives helped kind of, one of them located it for sale on Facebook, and they were able to help recover that back for the owner there. So besides the drug work, they also do great work like that with stolen property when it, when they, when needed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again. Next is a report of our county administrator, Mr. Shea.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. They've already begun, started some of the preliminary construction work on the Family Justice Center, laying some conduit for fiber optic. And they'll be bringing in the construction trailer, I believe, this week, and start tree clearing this week. We did receive 44 applications for the deputy county administrator position, and interviews will start next week. The second edition of the county newsletter has been printed, and it should start to be, be mailed out this week. So within the next, I would say, few days or so, you should start seeing those in, in mailboxes. And so kudos to Shannon Feldner, who put this together. I think she did a really fantastic job on this. And I know the first edition was really, really popular, and I would expect this one to be the same. Our, our ARPA task force did meet last week, and we've sent the bucket managers draft contracts to review. And those, once the bucket managers say, yep, those look good, we'll send those up to the Finance Committee and to the Board for approval. And the idea is, once they're approved, the bucket managers would have 90 days to, to begin identifying and vet projects and submit those to the county. And we're also right now, at the same time, working on an application form to submit those projects. And we're even working on a survey to send out to the public. So in addition to having the bucket managers identify and vet projects, we're going to send out a, a survey to get some public input on that as well. Our intent is to hopefully approve the first round of projects before the end of this year. So that's our intent.
This will be phased in?
Yeah.
Couple different, two, three phases?
Yeah, yeah, we won't, we're not proposing to, to approve all $57 million by the end of this year. There's certain things, for example, broadband is one bucket. We wouldn't be in a position to spend money on that this year, and, and the fact that we're converting our ARPA funds to lost revenue savings allows us some more time to make sure that we thoroughly vet projects before spending the money on those.
John, we don't have all the money, is it, do we? All 57 million?
We received the first half last year, and Karen, did we receive the second half? Not yet. It should be coming.
So don't spend it before you have it.
That, that's kind of the idea. So, and I don't expect, obviously, even the first round to be spending, you know, the first half of it in the first round. So, but yeah, you are correct on that. We resumed brown bag lunches with the employees just to get a, a sense of how things are going, and we'll continue to do that. And I've also begun meeting with the local township supervisors, mayors, and, and if they've got a manager, manager, just to introduce myself to the, to the local units of government. Did send out the, so a couple of things, did send out the Administrator's Digest last, I'm losing track of time a little bit, but I think it was last, last, last week. So went through that, and our, our intent is to send that out every, every couple of weeks. Did want to just touch upon a couple of things, because we've, you know, we've been hearing at the county, you know, certain opinions or misconceptions about some of the services we provide or don't provide. And so, you know, one of the things we've been hearing is that our health department is pro-abortion or even provides abortion services and, or funds abortions, and that is false. We don't promote abortion. We don't provide abortion services, and we do not provide funding to any abortion providers. I'm not aware of any abortion provider, even in the county, for that matter. So we're
I think we gotta go to our Kent County for that.
Yeah.
In fact, I don't think there's anybody on this board that is anything different than, you know, pro-life. I think we all sit that way.
So, and, and we receive Title X federal money, so we're prohibited from federal law from advising any of our, any person that comes into the Public Health Department. We cannot advise or recommend one option, whether it's abortion, adoption, any type of family planning services. We can provide information in a neutral, fact-based manner that doesn't direct them to one option or another. That's, that's the requirement of federal law, and that's what we, that's what we do.
John, and that, how many, how many counties accept the federal monies?
I think most.
Almost all counties?
Yeah, I believe most do. I believe, I'm going off memory, which can be dangerous. I think we get about 286,000 a year, something like that.
That's, there's a gag order that I think was explained at a, at a previous board meeting that also allows us to accept that federal dollars, but not do any abortion promotion whatsoever.
Nope. So, so again, we, i- if someone does, and this doesn't happen actually very often, but if someone does request that information, we provide that information that contains information on abortion, adoption, and other family planning services. And if the person says, hey, what should we do? We don't provide that answer. We just simply provide the information, and we don't direct them one way or the other. That's, that's what we're required to do under federal law, and that's what we're doing.
Hey, John, it's my understanding that Title X also provides other tests besides
Oh, yeah. Yep. Other, yeah, it, it funds other services, not just, you know, adoption, abortion, family planning services, so.
And that if we refuse those funds, then families would obviously not have a place to go possibly for, you know, other types of tests besides pregnancies.
That is correct. So one thing we keep hearing is that the Public Health Department requires sex education schools regardless of the parent's desire, and that's, that's absolutely false. We don't have any authority over sex education or any other curriculum for that matter in schools. So the county doesn't have anything to do with school curriculum. We serve as a consultant to the schools that seek information about evidence-based sex education, and parents can choose to use that information we provide or not use it. It's totally up to the, the parents in that case, so it's nothing that we require in any way. The other thing that we've, we've heard is that our DE and I office promotes racism, and, and that's absolutely false. We're trying to ensure that everybody in the county, regardless of background, language, age, abilities, have equal access to county services. And so gave a couple of examples. Our office partnered with the District Court to conduct both the facility and procedural audit, assessing the adequacy of signs, language expressed, appropriate Uh assessing the adequacy of signs, language expressed, appropriate privacy, disability barriers and other attributes. And they've also worked on the Family Justice Center um planning uh to ensure that customers with different. Um abilities and cultural backgrounds can access the services that that building will be providing. Um so just wanted to to put that out uh there to you. And then finally, just in response uh to the Juneteenth, um this this was a difficult issue. Uh the county received a memo from SCAO, the State Court Administrative Office on June third. Uh miss um notifying us that the Supreme Court issued an order that all courts shall be closed. On Juneteenth, which is June nineteenth, which this year is a Sunday. So we would have to have the courts all closed on Monday, June twentieth, so less than three weeks' notice. Uh that we would have to close our our courts. And, you know, obviously, our dockets are really full. We're coming back from COVID uh was an issue. And uh two, we have seven collective bargaining agreements where Juneteenth is not listed as a holiday in any of those collective bargaining agreements. So the county, um we have currently in place a local administrative order that governs our court holidays. And it specifically lists, uh and I'm off, I don't know, four, five, six holidays. And then obviously, the county has floating holidays that employees can use, uh whether they want to celebrate Juneteenth. Day, uh MLK Day, Veterans Day, whatever the case is. Um, so we were kind of put in a pickle here with less than three weeks to go, because there's really no way to. To open up contract, seven contracts and and try to resolve this. So we met with the chief judges of the Circuit Probate and District Courts uh with the county and and HR. And uh came up uh with the solution um that if we did. Uh if we did say, okay, courts are closed and we'll just pay the court employees a holiday. The court employees, I'm sure, would be very happy with that, but then the non-court employees would say, why are they getting a holiday and and we're not? Um so to make the best of a of a difficult situation, we tried to provide as much choice to the employees. Uh they could take the day off without pay. Uh they could use one of their floating holidays uh in order to to be paid for that. Uh and we also offer the ability to work uh make up those hours over a two-week period of time, so. Um you know, to make up those eight hours, if you will, over two weeks, so. Uh maybe they're working, if they wanted to make up in one week, they work four tens, for example, um or they could smooth that out over two weeks. You know, a- again, it was the best of a difficult situation. Uh I don't know if the Supreme Court, frankly. With all due respect, really thought through the difficulties that this created. Uh I know many other counties were struggling with this as well. Uh because in our case, if we just simply said, everyone, all county employees get the day off. Um, that would cost us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we're getting no work. In return for that, and that includes the cost of if if someone has to fill in on a uh at the sheriff's office. It's now a holiday and they get paid, I think it's time and a half for that or double time for that, so there's that cost as well. So i- if the Supreme Court had said, hey, we'll we'll begin to implement this in June of twenty twenty-three. That would have given us a lot more time to come up, probably, you know, with the, maybe even a better solution than what we were forced to do really on the fly. But we did it in collaboration and in consultation with, uh again, the chief judge, chief judges of the Circuit Probate and District Courts. And came up with what we felt was was the best option in a difficult situation, at least for this year. And then um we'll see how we want to address that for next year and beyond.
I'm a little concerned about this Supreme Court. I know they got the power, but just all of a sudden, hey, this is the new holiday of the. Of the day, you know?
That was our concern. Now, they said they've been seeking public input before that. Um but their decision was made less than three weeks before this. That made basically every county in Michigan scramble to determine what to do, because the court can make this decision. They don't have to pay for it. That's up to us to figure that out. Um so that that's what really rubbed a lot of counties the wrong way. Um was the very last second notification of this. Um so again, if they had said, this is what we're doing, we're gonna implement it a year from now, um then I think we would. I'd be able to sit down, have a lot more time uh with the the labor groups and the chief judges and come up with. With something that hopefully worked for all sides.
Sir Chair, just a couple of quick questions, Sean. What would be the cost for us? I know we split some of those costs with the SCAO. Would be the cost for us to do that for our court employees? Now, you you said two hundred fifty thousand for all employees, correct?
Right, cause because again, you know, when we look, hey, just give the court employees the day off. Um while the the court employees would say, yeah, that's a great idea, um their their fellow county employees. Would probably disagree with them.
For sure.
And so I I all I know is when we looked at if we did this countywide, because we looked at that option, that was the approximate cost of of doing that. Uh I'm not aware, I mean, that scale would even entertain a notion to. To split that cost or pay a portion of that cost.
Okay, so we would, we don't know offhand what what the cost would be to pay our court employees for that for that day.
Well, we we.
I mean, we got twenty fifty thousand for the entire.
Yeah, I.
County, but.
And again, we we, yeah, because we looked at and saying, you know, no one liked the idea of just providing the holiday for court employees. And allowing the the rest of the employees to not have that. That didn't seem like a very. That didn't seem like a very fair idea to anyone. And again, with only a couple of weeks, even less than that, to really figure out what we're going to do.
Um, so what do we do like when we have snow closures? What what is the?
Snow closure?
So if we close the court systems or even close the county for a day for snow or for whatever reason. What happens in that case? Everyone gets paid that day or doesn't get paid that day?
Uh uh and again, I'm not, I I don't know what we, since I've been administrator, we obviously have not had snow, so I'd have to give that some. Or at least snow closures, I should say.
But what, but we have closed over, I've been commissioner for sure. We've closed buildings and clo- and and sent folks home. Did they get paid for that?
We've had power outages and stuff like that affecting different buildings.
Okay, and what happens in that scenario?
I believe on those, um what we did is we sent the, some of those employees worked from home, some went home and we did pay those employees.
So it wouldn't be. I mean, it wouldn't be out of, I mean, where where folks are, in this case, the Supreme Court says, you're not allowed to work. In the same sense, there's, if we have a closure or an outage, folks are not allowed to work, so it wouldn't be out of pattern for us to pay that.
Yeah, I mean, and again, that wasn't, that was one of the options we looked at. We chose not to do that. So I'm not saying it was a discussed option.
You know, explain again, John, to me, why this only, uh what impacts court employees?
Th- this um this order only affected the courts.
Only affected the court.
Correct.
Really?
Not the county as a whole, just the courts.
So no one else has to celebrate June.
And again, we we provide, and this is why we sometimes think floating holidays work pretty well is because people can then. Use their floating holidays to celebrate any day that they want and for different people may want to celebrate a different holiday.
Okay. Uh, John, I wanted to ask a couple.
Go ahead. What was, Chair, I just, uh, John, I want to say, I I think uh by offering. Uh the ability over two-week time to make up time, I think that was very admirable. I know from on a business side, if it was if. If it was a business that was making a decision, you know, you never want to give. Uh you never want to force an employee to take time off when they need the hours, um if they're living paycheck to paycheck.
I agree.
Okay, so um I think that's one thing where the court didn't think that through, but I think. What you done by saying you can make that time off over the course of those two weeks that allows, I think that was, that was um. Uh in my personal opinion, that was a very, a very good choice and very good option off.
Any other discussion?
So this is, so is it different than a state unfunded mandate or is it pretty much the same?
I I that's how we viewed it and that's how other counties looked at it.
Yeah.
That.
So they want to, they want to say, this is a holiday you're gonna do, what do you, what if, what if we said no?
So we we looked at.
Take them to court because Doug would lose at Supreme Court level.
So not to get, not to get too much, not yet.
Give me a chance, come on.
Not not to get too much in the weeds on this, but we did talk about that and uh and one. Um, you know, we have technically a local administrative order that actually outlines the specific holidays our courts take.
Yeah.
Which is different, you know, than the Supreme Court, but we're allowed, if they approve it, these local administrative orders to to customize some of our operations. Scale said they would just immediately rescind our local administrative order. And if we still ignore them, they would have the ability to remove um our chief judges and appoint new chief judges from outside the county. Um was another thing that they said that they could do.
Uh their defense to the Headley issue was, you don't have to pay him. We looked at the other problem that the, by the way, the county can't just pay, even if you wanted to. You'd have to get the court's permission to do that as well, because the court personnel, some of the problems the courts wrestled with. Are they have people in juvenile detention who have to work. Um, there are people in the clerk's office that primarily work for the courts in filing. They wouldn't get paid, you know, so there were some equity issues. Within this three-week period that the courts were very concerned about too, because some of their individuals are gonna have to work. And then you have the county personnel, the clerk's personnel, so they didn't think it would be fair on such short notice just to hand out. You know, extra pay to some of their personnel and not to others, so it's a complicated. Uh process with the seven units, some of which are county and. You would think, well, a unit that's just a court personnel, of course, they're gonna agree to this, but there are blended units. That have court and county personnel in it, so that's a difficult sell for them. To just endorse half of their membership getting this extra pay, so, you know, it was the best we could do. With less than three weeks' notice and meet all of our legal obligations to be fair, equitable. And to recognize the collective bargaining process.
Did Mac have much of a warning?
I haven't heard nothing about this. We got a, we got a Mac board meeting Friday morning, so I'll bring it up and talk about it.
Yeah. Any other discussions?
Yeah, go ahead.
John, John, uh on the ARPA task force, those open meetings to the public, I mean. You know, is public able to attend those and hear the discussions?
We've, I mean, they're not, this Doug's the legal expert, obviously, they're not technically public bodies.
Right.
We have not kicked anybody out. Um we had a couple of people there that weren't members of the task force that came to the last meeting.
And so they're able to attend if they want to. I mean, we can't say, yeah, the doors are closed.
Yeah, I I mean, it's, it's technically not a public body subject to Open Meetings Act, but we have not kicked anyone out that has happened to attend those.
We're we're treating them like a committee, open board.
Yeah.
Good, so they're open.
Great. Uh, how many residents receive your administrative uh notice or or digest?
Shannon can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's about thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I just want to applaud your efforts. Uh you know, I know that I brought that up a couple of months ago and I appreciate you uh responding to it. But I especially appreciate the fact that you have attempted to address some of the misinformation that's been tossed around. Another county, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Um, one last thing, Sheriff, um obviously, you see the the art being set up. Uh the Art Trust reception and awards will be uh June twenty-first at four P M here in the lobby. And I believe the art will be displayed between essentially now and August twenty-third, so for the next couple of months. That's all.
Thank you. General information, comments, meetings intended? Commissioner Deion?
Thank you. Um last Thursday afternoon, I had a chance to stop in and see the super cool Sheriff's School in Jethison. They had um two hundred young kids signed up for the Sheriff's School. Um, the sign-up lasted less than forty-seven minutes to fill two hundred spots. It it was an amazing afternoon, not alone for our county, but especially for our Sheriff's Department. The parking lot at Rebounders in Jethison was full of um mostly school resource officers, officers that are in. You know, Jethison and Hudson Vale and Allendale, all of our public schools, interacting with these young people. They were in the trampolines, they were showing them the the boats, they were showing them this, what the divers do. Um, just everything, and these kids were running around, smiles, respectful, listening. And building relationships with the men and women of the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department, so if you get a chance, um. Give Steve and Val and and pat them back and and tell them uh that they're doing great things with the super cool Sheriff's School.
Commissioner Zell. We should, I appreciate John's um kind of discussion about the abortion issue. I just want to clarify that. Um, I believe all ten of you have sought endorsement at some point from Right to Life. I have not, so.
You know, I wanted to say also that this coming Friday, that uh what did the Fillmore Complex will be hosting the uh. The West Michigan Regional Planning Commission, uh you know, here at nine thirty, I believe, and John will be addressing that group, so. Anyone who's not out doing something else, always just join us for an hour, so. There's always donuts, by the way, for that one.
The other.
Just a reminder that uh Lester Langland.
Oh, yeah.
Tonight at the teenager center, so.
In my crossing.
In my crossing, I'm sorry.
Yep.
It's pretty much the same thing, right?
Yeah, thank you.
At your center.
Lester is the grandfather of Ottawa Conservation.
Yes, yes, he is, yes.
Yes. Is that five thirty, I believe?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
And we will be uh, I'll be hosting uh the Mac Board this weekend in Grand Haven, so we get to choose uh. Our town where we want to hold it as Mac President, so we'll be holding Grand Haven, uh a little venue there and uh our board meeting will be uh Friday morning. And I'm sure we'll get a um interesting legislative update from Tina and Steve, so I look forward to reporting you on that when I come back.
Excellent.
Tell them about this great shoe store, would you?
Uh, I got it, I got it.
Anything else, gentlemen, before we ask for our second opportunity for public comment? Second opportunity for public comment, anybody in the audience or online? Yes, ma'am?
Susan O'Connor, Ottawa County District Court, um with the Ottawa County Employee Association. Um, we did appreciate that they offered us alternatives to this day of no work. I myself was okay with whatever they had to offer, however. Um, I did listen to a lot of employees that are out of P T O time because of COVID. They had to use all their time during COVID for um either daycare's shutting down or they were in close contact. So a lot of people don't have that P T O available. Um, a lot of other counties that I spoke to were in the same situation, were in where their contracts were already signed. Uh Juneteenth was not something that was discussed prior and so it's something that their counties. Knew they had to do um because they're, they didn't feel there was another way out. Um, their courts are the only people being paid in that county. They are not, some of them are shutting down the whole county. Some of them are not. The majority are not, it's just the courts, but every court I spoke to is getting paid for it. And I agree, it's not fair to the rest of the employees. I agree one hundred percent. Um, however, is it fair to these employees that either had vacation time scheduled? So they don't have enough days to be able to make that time up. Um, we do have people that are in that situation where they had vacation time scheduled, so there's not enough time for them. To be able to make that time off. Um, there are the people that don't have any P T O available. To be able to to fill that day. We were informed last week. So these people, a lot of people are struggling with daycare to try and be able to put in extra hours because. Daycares charge more if they, your kids are there longer and usually it's fifteen dollars for fifteen minutes. If you have to be there beyond your normal scheduled time. So it's a great expense for people that have children that have to send their kids to daycare. To be able to come in at seven o'clock in the morning instead of eight o'clock or stay until six o'clock instead of five o'clock. Um, I guess uh there's been numerous power outages out here at Fillmore and those. and those employees have gotten paid and not the rest of the county, just the people that work here. And I get that you can't work without power, but we can't work because of the Supreme Court. So what's fair is fair. Sorry. I guess that's probably about it. Main thing, you know, these, I feel bad for people that have young children. I don't, I don't have to worry about the daycare, but I know there have been people that have been panic, I'm panicking on how they're going to take care of this. So that's just my feedback. I get it all. I try and stay mutual, but I I have to represent the people that I'm here to represent. So I'm just trying to do the best I can to try and figure out how to please the people.
Hopefully, we can come up with a, something for next year, that's for sure.
Working on, during the lunch hour too. I don't know what district courts.
They are, but you still only have so many days and so much time. And if you have vacation time planned, if you already have vacation time, that's last days you have to make that time off.
No, but if you could work through your lunch break.
And a lot of people are.
Yeah.
But if they have vacation time planned, that vacation, that lunch hour doesn't, isn't enough time. So, and I guess just with other counties having to have to deal with the same thing and their contracts don't have Juneteenth in them either. They had to make an exception for this year and it's something that they'll have to deal with next year. They'll have to deal with it before next year, hopefully. But it's just been a struggle for a lot of employees to try and figure out how they're going to do this and still be able to make their eight hours of time in. So thank you for your time.
Well, thanks for representing your, your group.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, we will go for an adjournment. We're adjourned.